Call the meeting order. Thanks for us and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. Good to see everyone. Uh, we will move on to roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Bentley?
Here.
Brunz? Flynn?
Here.
Morrissey?
Here.
Soha? Stuccio?
Here.
Wolfram?
Here.
Mayor Fratton Paldino?
Here.
You have six present.
Thank you very much. Uh, there was some discussion about attendance in general. I wonder if it'd be good custom to formally excuse? I know the county commissioners do that. We just make a motion just to have it on the record. Um, so I don't know if council wants to do that. They gave us notice.
They did give.
Both of them did, yes.
Then I move that we excuse their absence.
I suppose so. That's what the commissioners do. It seems like good practice, just to have it on the record.
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Their absence or excuse. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. I believe we have... Councilman Bentley?
Uh, a motion to add, share the warmth. Penny Myers wants to, uh, say a few words of their communications.
Okay, that will be letter C. Share the warmth update from Penny Myers. Do I have a second?
So.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Bentley, seconded by Councilman Flynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, so I would like to talk about... The EDP sponsorship, so we will put that under... New Business B. That's on the consent agenda, letter G currently. Move that to New Business B. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, I will accept a motion for the amended agenda.
So moved. Score?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Flynn to accept the amended agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. We will move on to public comments on agenda items. You have three minutes to speak. Please keep your comments tied directly to something in the agenda. If you are speaking on the two operas or the IFE, we will have a separate public comment period for that. The podium is open.
Uh, Shelley Hebert, 390 West Carlton. Mr. Brunz, Mr. Flynn, Paldino, Soha, and Bentley. I assume Brunz and Soha probably had diarrhea. The five of you that voted yes could have chosen to have done nothing. Allowing Hope Harbor to move forward with their plans and allowing Camp Hope to stay. Making an easy transition from a tent to the new shelter. Remember, they are housed, if they're housed or not, they're still city citizens. You should be ashamed of yourselves. Destroying Camp Hope built for the most vulnerable in the community is appalling. A homeless task force was started. A whole year of talking. They agreed a full-time shelter was needed, yet even after hearing the suggestions, the city had done nothing to help it be accomplished. Mr. Soha, and I'm going to refer to him that he's sitting in that chair, for the record. You yourself said a shelter was needed, but only to be done through philanthropy. Well, that's what we did. When city councils decided to criminalize a class of people. The city was aware that Hillsdale Thrift, Camp Hope, hired an architect to present plans to develop a sober, living, transitional housing called Hope Harbor. You knew Hope Harbor was presenting their site plan at the November Planning Committee meeting, and yet the city continued to rip it away. Basically, by choosing to destroy Camp Hope, you gave your middle finger to all the ramparound services working in this community. Taking care of citizens in need. Shall I name them? APS, CPS, Lightway, Segway, DHS, Domestic Harmony, all the courts, the city police, the sheriff's department, and the jail. Then, right after your decision to destroy many lives, you vote to add another extension to the Kiefer project. Costing the city valuable dollars. The council has proven to find corporate welfare more important than social welfare of this city. You should be ashamed of yourselves. We did it on our dime at Hillsdale Thrift. To condemn the camp when the city did not have any liability for it. The city is saying the most vulnerable don't matter. The city administration accused Misty of rage baiting on Facebook. Was that any of you? No, it wasn't rage baiting. It was finally giving those with voices unheard an opportunity to tell you how they feel.
Thank you.
You can start, Larry. I'll have you arrested for harassing me.
Thank you, please, please, thank you.
Tell him. He opens his mouth again and he's being arrested for harassing me.
Please stop, please stop, thank you. The podium is still open.
I commend the council for... For trying to enforce their zoning, especially condemnation of the... The tent and everything. Now, this is my point. You got property on West Street. It's been condemned for over ten years. Now it's supposed to be sold unless whoever buys it proposes plans to the building department or the zoning for the town or for the city. Uh, the Norton's have to buy it, which, I don't know where that goes. So nothing's going to happen there. Then, they come up with a beautiful picture, but that's all they had. It was a picture of the outside of the building. Then they got it rezoned, and it's still condemned, of course. So, that went on, and then they sold it to Hillsdale Renaissance, which... Nothing's going to happen there either, of course. We all know that. And I haven't seen any of their pictures of what they did or how they got to buy it without going through the proper channels and proposing what they're going to do with it. Like I said, this building's been condemned for over ten years. They're paying taxes as a condemned building. So they're not even paying full taxes like the house right next door to them, where people live. They're getting a special tax break because it's a condemned building. So if you're going to enforce one for a condemned building, then do the others. Do like Mr. Soha said. Let's start enforcing the laws. I mean, it's like the overnight parking. I know this thing's minstrel, but... Overnight parking, the thirty-minute parking by the court out or by the crossing the post office. It's laws. If you're going to enforce them, enforce them. Don't just do it on certain people. And that's the way this town seems to run. Depends on who you are, who you know, or whatever, or what side of Carlton Road you're on, or whatever. If the election goes the way I think it is, it's going to be a travesty to the people in this city. The, the actual people that live in this city. Not the ones that are going to be here for three or four years and move on. It's, it's going to be terrible for the rest of the people. They're actually going to have to live with the rules that somebody voted for because they're in the group. And anybody that would take those votes is like buying votes, as far as I'm concerned. I know that's probably legal because they can legally vote, but when you're taking... People that aren't fully mentally developed and using them to vote you in, that's a travesty. Thank you.
Thank you. The podium is open.
Not the man I used to be. I apologize. Here, walked here. Uh, so James Everett Thomas, 2200 Bar Street. Saw some interesting things in the packet again, uh, things that I wasn't able to read over. Uh, when I read, uh, I believe it was from page sixty-eight, uh, in the last packet. And, uh, it was expressed that, uh... Councilman Soha, in the public safety meeting, had expressed there had been forty-two fire slash EMS calls and twenty-eight, uh, police calls to Camp Hope since its inception to, I believe, May twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, I thought that was an interesting fact because I wondered... Who else consumed emergency services at that rate? And what did they contribute back to the community? And what value did the board put to that, sorry, township, council put to that? And the, and, 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 you know, the city, and especially, you know, the city employees and stuff and giving their input on that. Uh... Uh, so, um... And I also wanted to commend the city employees. I was able to view a video on Adam's Times of the city employees just being above and beyond, doing their job in the face of unpleasant circumstances, just being utmost professional, and I want to commend them. In particular, Mr. Blake seemed to just be above and beyond what personally I probably would have, uh, been capable of. And, uh, man, that's where the brain, the little man brain. So the last thing I want to talk about was ice cream. And I think, uh, and I'm, by the way, I'm referencing the minutes that are going to be approved tonight from the last city meeting, Mr. Beckwith, and I'm being serious here. I, I'm sorry, I'm a little, uh... Not the man I used to be, but from what I understand, Mr. Beckwith's son is Lieutenant Governor of Indiana. Uh, from what I understand, Mr. Beckwith owns two ice cream production facilities. I believe one in Columbus and one somewhere in Indiana. Uh, from my personal experiences with Mr. Beckwith, he is a pretty incredible guy. Uh, and so what I heard that wasn't reflected in the meeting minutes is Mr. Beckwith come to the board with intellectual property he was willing to share for the profit of the community. And I thought that was really special and had to be pointed out. Because quite candidly, if I was in Mr. Beckwith's position, I'd report that for my family and our future. And I, again, Mr. Beckwith is a really incredible person, and he made what I took as a really incredible intellectual property offer, in fact, intellectual property offer at the end of the last meeting, and he did ask to have some meetings with, I'm sorry, I was sitting over there, so pointing is like, yeah, I don't know. But he did ask to have some meetings and maybe, maybe that's worth people's time. Thank you viewers.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Okay, very good. I will close the podium. We will move on to consent agenda. Okay, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Anything from council, staff? All set? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion and we accept tonight's consent agenda with the note that letter G has been moved to New Business Letter B.
So.
Thank you. Uh, motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve the consent agenda with that noted change. Is there any discussion? Could I go roll call though, please?
Yes, Councilperson Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
Stuccio?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Fratton Paldino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to Roman numeral six, communications petitions to letter A, airport update. Travis is here for us. And council members should have a written update in front of them as well. I think I saw that somewhere. Thanks for being here. How's it going out there?
It's going.
What have you been there? Three, four months now?
Uh, six.
Six, alright, okay, great.
So, going well so far, been busy.
Yeah, good.
So, tying into that would be the new terminal project that we're trying to officially wrap up. And the holdback on that is the parking lot. Uh, the parking lot has to be finished before we can get the final consent approval for the occupancy permit for the terminal. So, the parking lot still needs to be striped and one light put up. And then we can have the final inspection done and open to the public. So I always have some questions on why we're still closed out there, but that's why. So, hopefully this week we'll have that completed, moving forward openly to the public. Um, in addition to that with the terminal is the exterior wood beams that have been a process throughout the building, the terminal. Those should be here this week and be installed by, uh, Friday, hopefully, weather permitting. And those are just two exterior beams that wrap the north side of the building and the south side of the building. Talking about fuel sales real quick, just for an update, in the last thirty days, we've sold six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six gallons of jet A, one thousand two hundred and fifty-six gallons of, uh, avgas. So we're on pace with previous years at this point.
Are you still seeing a, a bit of a bump in volume with the lower price compared to last year?
Yeah, and that's also weather dependent too for the avgas side of things, because that's how we're for training aircraft. I think that's why, so... But we are seeing additional operations, so that's always good for future projects.
Great, thank you.
Onto hanger rentals. So effective October first, I increased the rate from one hundred to one fifty per month for all the T-hanger facilities. We have three rows of what we consider T-hangers. They're called T-hangers because the inside form a T shape for the air points they go into, so... Uh, that will be in addition to ten thousand eight hundred dollars of revenue per year going forward. Bringing the T-hanger rental revenue to thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. So a nice bump in the T-hanger revenue. Without the money that was associated to those repairs, that's in its current state. With minor repairs that your report staff will conduct.
What was the cost of those repairs?
We haven't done anything at this moment. We're still...
Do you have an estimated cost?
Uh, a hundred five thousand dollars in my opinion for all the T-hangers.
Yeah, please, Councilman Bentley?
I'm sorry. Uh, do you mind just interrupting you a little bit?
I don't mind, that's fine.
Uh, then I'd like to back up to the parking lot.
Hmm?
Um, is that contractor error?
There was a delay in the parking lot construction, but we also had a cure time of thirty days for the asphalt, and we just passed that recently. So after that, we're allowed to have vehicle wait on the parking lot, and at that time we can do the painting.
But it is beyond the schedule.
It is certainly. Yeah.
And was the contractor held accountable for that?
Um, no, not at this time. There was some weather delays, suspect it rains, um, some impaction tests that were not approved and had to revisit materials. So we're honestly one day away from being done. So at this point, we can drive on it. We just don't have the permit because we don't have the stretch yet.
I guess I, I guess I've gotten the impression that they were expected to be done by the grand opening.
It was paved, but we didn't, we had to wait that thirty days for cure time.
Um, and as far as the, the doors, the, the hangers, are you going to use the doors that were... Made? I think there were some doors made.
There were some doors made by previous staff that I don't feel would be worth the effort to hang. So I believe we can repair the existing doors with much less labor cost.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm? Okay, so, Corporate Hanger Number Two, which is our largest hanger at the airport, sits on the background. It's where breakfast is served at the flying above. That was previously not leased, and it is now leased as of November first at one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars per month, so that's all new revenue for us. That will be nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars per year in additional revenue. The tenant for that will be the current aircraft maintenance company that's in what we call the maintenance hanger, which is attached to the old terminal building. So they'll move from that spot into the larger hangers as they're expanding. And then I have multiple individuals interested in renting that maintenance facility that will be vacant. So I don't see any, I don't see any month where we don't have revenue coming from that facility from them moving. So they, they move into the hanger two in November first, and then we would lease their existing hanger in November first to a new tenant.
What was the maintenance hanger leasing for originally? Was it six hundred?
Six hundred a month.
Okay, so that wouldn't really change.
Yep.
I'm sorry. Um, when you raised the rent from one hundred to one fifty for the small hangers, the T-hangers, the, um... Is there still a waitlist? Did anybody block?
Uh, a few leased, or a few people left, yeah.
Probably did.
Yeah, they left right away.
And could you approximate how many are on the waitlist now?
Um, I could probably fill up twenty-five people tomorrow. So, well, I, I'd hate to see them go, but we'll be able to fill these spaces.
And you, you say you have new ones for the, uh, the maintenance hanger?
Yeah. He's a parent tenant, so they'll move out of his T-hanger into the larger if it ends up being him, and then we'll lease out his spot to someone on the waitlist. We get calls almost every day for hanger availability, so I don't have any concerns with having empty spaces in our terminal revenue. Uh, Corporate Hanger Number One, which is right by the rotating weekend, does need some door repairs. I know it was discussed over the last year or two about how to approach that. So our goal now is just to have your port staff try to make those doors operate properly. And then that hanger would also see an increase in the monthly rental rate. I haven't nailed that down yet, but I'm thinking somewhere in the six to eight hundred dollars. It was previously four hundred. So we'll have an increase there as well. Uh, another item on the to-do list is moving all the utilities to the tenants and off of the city. So previously, tenants of, for, say, uh, Corporate One and Two, they weren't paying the utilities. Something will be going forward.
Starting down?
Once, once we have, we've got to use some of your work and work through that process too, so.
Andrew Mackey, do you have a timeframe? You, what, how, how long will it take?
I mean, we, we've just started discussing the process, and with the terminal, it's been kind of put on the, on the backside of the list for now, but... The, the biggest one would be Corporate Hanger Number Two that wasn't, wasn't leased previously, and that was our largest space, so now we'll have, we'll have an almost, what, twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue from that. So, when that wasn't being leased, we were still paying utilities on it too, and now those utilities will transfer to the tenant.
Yeah, Councilman Flynn?
When you say utilities, is it strictly electric, or is there water and gas up there as well?
There is no water, and then it's propane heat.
Oh.
So they'll take responsibility for their tanks and fill in their tanks.
Does each hanger come with its own propane tank then?
Hanger, Corporate Number One and Number Two do. The T-hangers, they don't have heat, they don't have power, they have dirt floors for the most, most of the space on the floor. There's just one pad for the main gear. And the rest of those hangers are, are dirt.
Okay.
So, and there's no insulation in those hangers, so it would be pointless to try to get it. Okay, so lease agreements, and I'll start moving a little quicker here, but lease agreements, I want to go through the, the current lease agreements and make sure that all leases have the city listed as insured for any liability such as a fire. Say that we have a stored aircraft, and they plug the lunchbox heater into the engine, and it catches fire and burns out an entire row. I want to make sure that each aircraft has their own liability coverage so that we don't have any issues there. So that would be a lease change. The other lease change would be requiring that all aircraft stored at the airport are, are in annual, is what we call it. They have a yearly inspection. It's an FAA requirement. So, the building has to make sure our aircraft that are leasing from us, the hanger space are active. They're buying fuel, they're flying, they're utilizing the maintenance business at the airport. Instead of having people put airplanes in there and not touch them for five years. So... I'll grab something else. Uh, we had the terminal grand opening. We estimated two thousand people attending that. It was a great event, great weather, uh, religious ceremony. Uh, the car show area overflowed, the barbecue truck sold out, so I think next year we're going to try to expand all the spaces in, in the larger area for the car show and then expand the food options too after the exchange club dinner. And I believe it was the exchange club's best year ever for breakfast sales.
Yeah, Councilman Bentley?
And there was a, a lot of talk from Councilman Soha and others. Can you weigh in on whether Saturday morning would work?
I was just talking about, uh, earlier, so yeah, I'd like to try a year on a Saturday. So that might be next year. So I'm working on getting other military aircraft to come in and then... And expand a little, but I think a Saturday would work well. At least give it a shot.
Councilman Flynn?
I think the discussion with Councilman Bentley would have to be with the exchange club. Because this is actually their event held at the airport. Uh, since they started forty-some years ago, this is actually an exchange club event. So I think any change of date from Sunday to Saturday or whatever, we have to start with the exchange club.
I've spoken to them already about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
The AWAS system, which is the Elevated Weather Observation Station, that was in the previous terminal, some people might have realized that when you watch the weather on TV, that Hillsdale had no temperature or forecast available. That was due to the move of the AWAS station from the old terminal to the new terminal, which Brandon James was instrumental in getting that done, so that's open running now. So I appreciate his help. It was quite the task. So, when you watch the news now, you'll see that we're, we're still here.
We have brother.
Yes, we will. Uh, credit card processing fees is something I found that we weren't charging for previously. So we're going to institute a, your typical three, three and a half percent processing fee on credit card transactions. The previous twelve ten homes that cost us seven thousand dollars, so that would be a good change. And then the rest of it is just notes for you on fuel prices, with jet being at six seventy-eight a gallon, hundred lit at five twenty-eight a gallon, and then I listed our current user fees as well.
Great, very thorough. Thank you. All these changes look awesome. Any questions, comments from council, staff, Councilman Flynn?
Just one other question, Travis. On the lease agreements, are these agreements that you want to institute, are these ones that pilots are used to? That, that they, that they would expect pretty much anywhere. This is not going to be new.
It's boilerplate stuff. I've run the U.S. hangers throughout Michigan over the course of the last twenty years, and you had a lease agreement.
Okay.
And they're usually a bit more thorough as far as liability goes, so I just want to give us updated.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
There are agreements in place, though, if you don't, we do have those in place now. I'm just modifying the language a little bit.
Thank you.
Would you like to comment on any upcoming projects, or is it too early to talk about anything at this point?
I mean, right now, we don't have anything that's near future.
Okay.
Be, I had a meeting at MDOT in Madison a few weeks ago, and the discussion with them, that was just the taxiway connector for Taxiway Charlie. And we're working on a, on a plan to save the hangers.
Excellent.
So if we, if we don't bump that taxiway out, we'll lose all those buildings. And if we lose those hangers, we lose a significant portion of our revenue.
It sounded like the previous director had a, an agreement worked out for that.
Yeah, she, she was working on it as well, so we'll be able to maintain that, that revenue. The state won't pay for new hangers, so it would all have to be private investment, which is tough to get. So if we can keep the ones we have now, you know, those will be in a much better spot.
Excellent. Anything else? Council, staff?
Okay, thank you.
All set? Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. We will move on to letter B. Commissioner Ingles is not here, but he did send us an email. Oh, this was to you, if you want to read it.
So this is from Commissioner Ingles. I had a Zoom meeting with Christina Miller from Eagle last week to discuss the Hillsdale County Materials Management Plan. Eagle has not approved our work plan and asks for more definition to our proposed plan. I provided the requested information. We should be approved in the next two weeks. In the meantime, Christina suggested that our next meeting be held in November after plan approval. Our October meeting is canceled. If our plan is approved, the next Hillsdale County Material Management Plan Committee meeting will be held Thursday, November twentieth at six to seven thirty P.M. And our regular vocation at the conference room, County Office Building. A notice will be sent to confirm our meeting. And then he indicated that Jason Blake is the City of Hillsdale's representative to the committee. That was all for Commissioner Ingles' report.
Thank you. Thank you. Jason, anything to add on that? Too early at this point?
No.
Thank you. Okay, anything from council on letter B? We will move on to letter C. We put letter C here, correct?
Yes.
Uh, an update from Penny Myers at Share the Warmth. Thank you for being here, Penny. Appreciate you coming out.
As I said before, this is not my favorite thing to do. Um, but thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mackey, and, um, council members for letting me be here today. Um, I just wanted to, uh, you know, give you an update of, uh, Share the Warmth. I think all of you know who we are. Um, our mission has been to, uh, provide a warm, safe, clean place for the unhoused in Hillsdale County, um, to come and stay during the coldest winter months, November first through April first. Um, uh, and we are getting ready to open for our eighth season, so, uh, it's, you know, been a long journey and, um, one that's definitely got its trials and tribulations, but, um, it's something that we all enjoy doing. Our volunteers, we have like the best volunteers from this community, um. You know, I, uh, I love this county, I love this city, and, um, the people of this city and county have, um, you know, they've supported us for eight years and, um, and we couldn't have done what we have been doing without them, so, uh, we still are determined not to, uh, take any federal or state funding, which always makes the job a little bit harder. Uh, you know, because you have to work harder to, uh, be able to afford it. Um, so, uh, this season, I am happy to say though, so, you know, we've, we're only open at night, so it's been really difficult to have programs in there. Um, but this season, um, Love Inc. is, uh, they're going to come in twice a month and do a class for us, so I'm really excited about that. Um, American One Financial, they approached us, and they want to come in and teach, um, money management and, uh, you know, how to save your money, you know, how, uh, so we're excited about that. Um, so, uh, yeah, so we're doing that. And, uh, let's see, and our current needs, if anybody wants to know, uh, we definitely need cash donations, uh, for our operational budget, uh, volunteers. We just had our first volunteer meeting on Saturday. We had the largest gathering since we met open, so it was really awesome to see that, so, you know, the community is really getting to know us, and, uh, so that's good. So we are taking donations now, non-parish, uh, food items, canned goods, uh, flour, sugar, you know, all those things that you have to cook with. And, um, so wanted to let you know, because this is the highlight. Um, we were approached by a community foundation a few months ago to participate in the Great Give this season, so, um, early giving starts on November tenth, and then the Great Give, Great Give Day is December second. Um, now, it is our hope, um, that we will be able to raise for our first phase of the project, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a lot, it, it's hard to even say that, so, um, because we are determined to have our own facility, so we can be open year-round. Um, you know, for the last seven years going into our eight years, it's been really hard to, um, accept our limitations, you know, um. Every end of the season, first day of April, or last season, the church let us stay open until April twenty-third. It's really hard to close the doors, you know, um, because we know they're going to be on the street. But we have accepted that limitation because we, that's all we can do. So, um, but we are determined, um, you know, to get our own facility. We've hired, um, Christie Plemons to, uh, look for building for us. And, um, so our hope is to become year-round, and I know I've said it before, but we are serious. So, um, you know, uh, we just appreciate the support of this community, uh, and, and I will try to keep you updated as best we can, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Great, thanks so much for your work. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Bentley?
Uh, thank you, Penny. You were starting to mention what you need besides cash, um, clothes, socks?
Uh, we, socks, yes, absolutely. Socks are imperative, we have to have socks. We do, we do keep some clothes, but we don't have a lot of storage. So, uh, you know, we don't really like to take a lot of clothing because the, uh, you know, the Salvation Army, June's Place, the thrift store, you know, pretty much all the thrift stores will give us what we need as far as clothing goes, so that's good. You know, just, uh, and right now, I think we have all the bedding that we need. You know, it's just basically right now, we need food, you know, uh, food, uh, you know, those kinds of things. Shampoo, conditioner, toothpaste, body wash, hand soap, laundry soap, um, because we wash everybody's clothes every night when they come in, uh, so we go through a lot of laundry, so, um, help with utilities, uh, is always a plus. Um, so the, uh, the church's water bill last season was, you know, a couple different times over a thousand dollars. Because you know when you're washing twenty-five loads of laundry every night, and then twenty-five beds every week, it, you know, it's a lot of water. So, um, you know, things like that are very helpful, but I will say, when I, uh, asked the community about that bill at BPU, this community stepped up and they paid that bill, so, um, and we see that all the time. We, I mean, this could, you know, and I, you know, I, I can't say it enough, we appreciate what this community has done for Share the Warmth. And, um, we hope that we can continue, um, doing that.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn.
Penny, how many folks can you house each unit?
All right, so, um, this season, we are starting out with fifteen monk beds, which this community paid for last year. Um, so that's thirty beds, we have thirty beds on the men's side, and ten beds on the women's side. And, um, we do have overflow cots if needed, so we can house right now forty people comfortably. And, uh, you know, if needed, we can put cots in, uh, you know, other places.
What are your search criteria for the building, and how many people would you like it to be able to house?
For our new, or right now?
For the new building, yeah.
For the new building. Well, you know, we've given it some thought, and, uh, because we are such a small community, uh, I, you know, I guesstimate, um, it would be good, and hopefully never have to use them, but good if we could have sixty beds for men, and then probably twenty-five to thirty beds for women. So that's, you know, and I would hope that we wouldn't have to, you know, over, you know, go over that, but, you know, if we, if we do, then, you know, we work hard to make that happen.
And you're looking in the city specifically, or in the county?
Um, in the city, because, you know, they're homeless, so, you know, they have to be within walking distance, right? So, and it is, um, it's going to be a little bit difficult because, you know, talking to the zoning commission, you know, there's a certain area where we can be, so, uh, you know, we're going to stay within that, uh, you know, those zones, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else from council? Staff?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Oh, yeah, Councilwoman Wolfram?
I mean, I didn't, I mean, I, I forgot, it was about, it was right shut down.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but where do people bring food?
Oh, to Seven South Manning Street.
Okay.
See, I just take it for granted that everybody knows where we're at, so, yeah, we're in the old Wilson Hall, Seven South Manning Street.
Are there certain times of the day, certain days?
So, you know, when we open, we'll be there every day, but right now, um, I think my phone number is out there in the world, so give me a call or look me up on Facebook, and, um, I'll make that, you know, I'll be available for drop-offs, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you. We will move on to Roman numeral seven, introduction and adoption, adoption of ordinances and public hearings. Our first public hearing is an Oprah for Hillsdale Renaissance at sixteen South Hillsdale Street. Council?
Shouldn't there be South Hallow?
Oh. This is, this is for A?
Howell Street.
South Howell Street. South Howell Street. This is? I was thinking this was for the rail yard building, but we haven't even set a public hearing for that. This is for next check of records, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is on South Howell.
Okay, there is no South Hill Street, is there? Okay, South Howell Street, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council. So, um, as Mayor Protem mentioned, uh, the city is in receipt of an application for an obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act certificate um, for property owned by Hillsdale Renaissance located on sixteen South Howell Street. Um, this is a two-story building that they are renovating, uh, as a, as a two-story office space. Um, the project has a price tag of nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. It's a fairly substantial, uh, renovation of the structure. Um, you can see looking at the property tax impact statement, um, in the packet that currently the taxable value of the building is, is listed as ninety-eight hundred dollars, which should tell you something about the condition it's presently in, or it was in prior to the, to the rehab project. They did apply for an Oprah, this does lie within the Oprah district that was created to cover the downtown in twenty thirteen. Um, based on the amount of investment in excess of five hundred thousand dollars, they do qualify for a twel-, up to twelve-year exemption, they are requesting twelve years. Uh, the City of Hillsdale's Economic Development Corporation did meet last week. Um, as per city policy, they do review these tax abatements, and they did unanimously recommend approval for this, uh, for this property. Are there any specific questions for me on this application? Uh, we do have representatives, uh, from the property owner here as well, if you have project-specific questions.
Council, any questions, comments on this project? Yeah, Councilman Flynn?
I would just like to thank Hillsdale Renaissance, I think most of us here had an opportunity to go through the building and look at it, I'd just like to thank them uh, for using as much local, uh, resources and employees and workers on that building as they could.
Yeah, yes, Councilman Wolfram?
I would say the same thing. Um, we went through the building, and it's just gorgeous, the way that they fix it up. And, uh, I, I think they're, they're doing an excellent job on that.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Anything else on this? Councilman Bentley?
And it's very near completion. Um, you expect to have a tenant when?
Uh, right now, uh, Colman's, uh, CEO of Fair Hillsdale Renaissance, our expected completion is the end of the month. Uh, pending any delays, it'll definitely be done before the end of the year.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All set? Okay, we will open the podium. You have three minutes to speak, and you may speak only about this issue, the Oprah for sixteen South Howell Street. The podium is open.
James Edward Thomas, twenty-two hundred Bar Street, uh, I think, but this part of the packet is really dense, and simple people like me have a little trouble understanding it, but from what I understand from the owner of Hillsdale Renaissance's comments, he is the second-largest property taxpayer into the city. Uh, it looks like there was, uh, maybe an SEV of fifty-four thousand on the property before, he's talking about putting five hundred thousand into it. Um, seems like a really easy choice to make, to go ahead and, uh, and give the, the extension. The only comment I would make is maybe he's earned twelve years, but maybe you guys alone deciding on twelve years is a bit, no offense in the word, presumptuous. And maybe there should be some sort of structure, uh, within the charter, or, uh, within, uh, gentleman's agreements behind the scenes to maybe abstain from votes, where you know that you're not going to serve out that full twelve years. Uh, I do believe in this situation, a couple people, you know, if you had a full council, a couple of people could abstain and it would still pass, and you would still be able to, to kind of honor that, uh, agreement for the future. Uh, you know, Kat Skidens always said that we should always have a ministry in the future. So I, I think that it's pretty tough when you, uh, come into, in a situation, and the whole coach is going to talk about coaching, and, and you, you know, you have some liabilities that you have to take care of, that you had no decision-making over at all whatsoever. Um, even if they are maybe the greatest things in the world, things can sour over time, no assumptions made. Uh, that's all, thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Any more public comments on the Oprah? Okay. No one coming from the sides, very well, we will close the public hearing and return to any council comments or questions to end it. Yeah, I, I agree with you, uh, James, and it, it always bugs me binding councils with future things. The difficulty with this one is they're done with the project, so, or not done, but ninety percent. So I don't think there's really any way to, I don't know, could you extend, have your councils extend it? The problem is, this provision ends in December, and so we decided not to change the policy at the last minute. But yes, I agree in theory. Also, another problem is we are term limited to eight years, so not a less than vote on this. Okay, anything else? Councilman Bentley?
It expires in December, can you say more, do you know?
The legislature has a sunset provision in the statute, from what I understand, and apparently, uh, there has been no action to re-initiate it, I guess they could at the last minute. Um, I'm not sure, has anyone heard anything about this? Is the legislature working on it?
Have not.
Haven't heard anything. Okay. All set, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Wolfram to approve the Oprah for sixteen South Howell Street. Any discussion?
I just, I just want to make one comment.
Yes, Councilman Stucho.
To your comment, I, I understand what you're saying, you want to shackle future councils to other councils, I mean, that, that doesn't make sense, but at the same time, you've got to keep in, you know, a business-friendly atmosphere.
That's right.
And you put these wishy-washy theories out there, it's true businesses with real money, uh, we're moving on, we can't depend on this, it's too wishy-washy, too many opinions, so we got to be firm and be, you know, business-friendly, this is, like I said, we have, we're blessed to have these events, so. So even that kind of talk is a little scary to people looking to invest, thank you.
Did we have a second from Councilman Wolfram? Oh, okay. Uh, then, anything else? Roll call.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Stucho?
Yes.
Fullfram?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Galagino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Anne Flynn?
Yes.
Six minutes approved, resolution three six five two.
Thank you. We will move on to letter B. Oprah for MT Meyer Properties LLC at seventy seventy-two North Howell Street. Construction was already started there, looks nice to see the face of that building. Oh, yes, thank you, please.
Yep, thank you again, so, uh, this is another Oprah application, this is for, um, MT Meyer Properties Project at seventy seventy-two North Howell Street, um, which, uh, will be the new home of, uh, Smith's Floral Boutique. So with this particular project, uh, they are looking at, uh, utilizing the first floor as the home for that business, as well as there would be some additional classroom and activity space, um, with, uh, plans to eventually remodel the upstairs to create a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom apartment. Um, upstairs, uh, apartments and, and, and mixed-use, uh, development, especially, you know, adding residential units is something that is very much needed in the downtown. Um, this particular project has a price tag of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Again, they are located within the Oprah district that was created downtown in twenty thirteen. They, because of the amount of investment here, which is under five hundred thousand dollars, by policy, um, we do grant up to ten years. Except for twelve. Were there any specific questions about this? We do have, um, again, representative from the, uh, business here. Do you have project-specific questions, or?
Would project-
Would project owner like to give an update, only if they want to?
Hi.
Hi, thanks for being here.
Thanks, thanks for having us.
Of course.
My daughter wanted to come to see the whole strand of this. It's a very learning experience for her. So there's only one change, the other, so the seventy will be for Smith's Flowers. Because we did not receive the Matchroom Main Grant, we're going to do the seventy-two as a small rental space. We already have several people interested to have that. So it does have, there is two bedrooms in the property and then the upstairs eventually in phase three will become apartments. And then there will be private parking out back and stuff. Windows arrive tomorrow, will be in November first. We're applying for the occupancy permit, I got it written back, tomorrow. So yeah, we're, we're pretty much good to go on the first floor. After five dumpsters. The second floor will be a whole other thing. But yeah, any other questions?
Great, thank you, Councilman Bentley?
So there's three phases, first floor is phase one?
Phase, no, first floor is actually two phases, because we're not that cool. The phase one is getting the, the five dumpsters and the things removed. So we've exposed the historical flooring, the ceiling. We were lucky enough not to have to renovate any of the restrooms that were already existing. The back area, we did remove slash came in because it was like going to be a hundred thousand dollars to repair and redo that roof and wall and that doesn't include any of the fun things you need like heat and electricals. So that's where that private parking comes in. That was phase one. Phase two is going to happen pretty quickly because that got included in some of the demo. And that phase two will be that extra rental space. I've been approached by a couple of people who would be interested in being in there because there is a handicap restroom already available. We just have to get, focus on getting the flower shop moved in and then we can finish the little bit of rental that's left in that. So that should be done March, February, March. And we'll have, so basically all we just need to do is clean up the walls. I want to do some touch-up on the bathroom for the gals and new flooring in there. But like I said, the new windows and doors go in tomorrow. And then phase three will, will have to, once we recover from phase one and two, we'll hit the second floor. So, so we'll hit the second floor and we're looking to put in a at least one-bedroom, one-bathroom, two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment. We'll get an architect involved. Every time I go out there, there's more space than I think there is. But as a mom with little people, I feel like a two-bedroom apartment needs more space. So the, the kids take up space, so yeah. And then that will be hopefully done within the next five years.
Okay, great, thanks for your work. Anything else from council, any other questions? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
I would just vouch for Sarah and her family. They, they've done a lot since they took over the flower shop and as difficult as it is to move from one building to another, none of you, other than that woman right there, has moved a cooler.
Well, I didn't move it, I have friends.
Well, but that, that cooler started at the edge of town. It then was across the street. It was then down on the corner by film station and now it's over here. She's not going anywhere. If anybody has any concerns about this business sticking around, because that cooler, if it doesn't put you out of business, makes you stronger, so I.
All the help has also said this is the last time they're moving the cooler, then.
Exactly, so, so they're not going anywhere, so. I, I commend you for taking on this project. She had, she had the opportunity a few months ago to take me through when it was still in demolition phase and I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And I know that Councilman Stucho has redone a building downtown and it's good to see that between all of them, they're making our downtown look a lot better.
This is your final location then?
For the next thirty years, yes.
Wonderful. Anything else? Thank you very much for being here, appreciate your work. Okay, that's it from council. Staff, yes? Okay, then I will open the podium. The public hearing has begun. You have three minutes, your comments must be about this project at seventy seventy-two North Howell Street.
This one's a pleasant dunk. James Edward Thomas, twenty-two hundred Bar Street. Actually Sarah's one of my neighbors, just around the corner. They've been there at least a half decade longer than I have, I'm going on eight years, so she's going to stick around. Her house is fastidious. Her front garden is always well-kept and I love the little high flowers they get going and the mulch they got going. They do a little side business with their kids and stuff with the farm in the back, which you can never smell and is always clean. So they seem like really excellent members of the community. They've been gracious neighbors and always welcoming in the four times I've talked to them over the eight years. But, you know, and they even took their time off of being at a very important Hillsdale Township meeting to be here for this purpose. So it seems again, you've got a forty-seven thousand dollar SEV, so a twenty thousand dollar property, they're going to dump two hundred thousand dollars in. People who care about the community, feel like I'm talking about Phil again. This is an easy one again. Again, I, I understand that you do not ever want to be wishy-washy with a business person, that's a bad idea. But talking about things in an open council meeting and proposing ideas is kind of what the Open Meetings Act is about. So maybe it's not the worst forum and there are four more wishy-washy things you can do than have conversations. Amazing people, got real roots in the community, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any more public comments on this Oprah? Very well, I will close the podium. Anything else from council staff before we have a motion? All set, I will entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Morrissey to approve the Oprah for MT Meyer Properties. Any discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Stucho.
Yes.
Fulfram?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Galagino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Morrissey?
Yes.
Zero, resolution three six five three.
Thank you very much, we will move on to letter C, public hearing for IFE Precision Gauge LLC at two eighty-two Industrial Drive. Sam is back here for us.
Back for round three, thank you. So we have here an application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate. This is from Precision Gauge for an expansion project that they have. So they currently, at their current facility, they have over a hundred and twenty-five CNC machines. They are running out of space and they need additional operational capacity. So they, very recently, as of August, purchased two eighty-two Industrial Drive. It gives them the space that they need to expand. As a result of this project, they're looking at installing a number of additional pieces of manufacturing equipment. This project is projected to create anywhere between forty to seventy new jobs, which is a pretty tremendous number for a project like this. The IFE application that they have submitted, in terms of the building improvements that they're making in two eighty-two, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand. I just would note though, that in total, between the purchase price for the building, which is about a little bit over two million, plus almost ten million dollars worth of new equipment that they are installing, this is actually a much bigger project than, than what is reflected on the application. So of course, for that manufactured equipment, that's not something that you can apply, apply to have abated. But this is a very, again, this is a project that our EDC board reviewed. They feel very strongly that it is a benefit for the community, particularly in terms of the jobs created. And again, another manufacturer that is here in the community choosing to reinvest and expand in the city versus move their operations elsewhere. Are there any questions about this particular application project?
I think you answered, I was just going to ask if the personal property is covered by Oprah or any other statute, but there is none.
So Michigan mostly phased out personal property taxes for certain types of eligible manufacturing equipment. It used to be that that was something you could also deduct using an IFE, but that changed. There was a series of reforms, it was probably back around twenty sixteen, I think, is, is when the majority of those changes went through.
Okay, good. Anything from council, staff? Very good. I will open the public hearing. You have three minutes and please limit your comments to this IFE. Hello, sir?
Hello, sometimes you get tired of talking chickens. So, again, Precision Gauge is one of my neighbors, fantastic neighbor. Never a smell coming off the factory, clean as heck outside, well-lit. From my research online, they're one of the best-paying jobs on Industrial Drive per hour, per start. From what I understand from my industrial research, that facility in Hillsdale is the best Precision Gauge facility to work in, in the Precision Gauge empire. Some of them down in southern Indiana at the foundries are kind of brutal. Happy work, steelwork, I kind of like that, but whatever, most people like a clean shop. So, no smell, super generous. Anytime I need pallets for my little, my little garden there by the road, they give me pallets and they're real friendly. And the front office people are always real polite and, and open to me getting rid of their garbage, basically. And I met one of the, the Hotchire brothers, I think, and he had a really great truck, classic Ford ninety-eight white, F-one-fifty that I just really wanted to mention because I respect the heck out of that truck. But just a, a great member of the community. And I also noticed in the city packet that they pay, I believe, seventy thousand dollars a year in taxes into the city, if I read that properly, on their current building. So wow, seventy jobs, best-paying jobs on the drive, seventy thousand plus, maybe a reduced rate in, let's call it eighty-six, eighty-nine, whatever it is, that's a major contributor to the community. That's got to be way up there, maybe behind Mr. Robison and, sorry, I can never pronounce his name right. Hillsdale Renaissance and Meyer, I, I believe are one too. So seems again, that you guys have got three really easy choices here, staying power in the community and I'm blown away by seventy really awesome jobs, that's a great thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Precision Gauge?
Hi, Orville Technologies, the parent company of Precision Gauge. Thank you for being here. Oh, thank you. I'll pause that. I'm the plant manager of the Hillsdale facilities that we're referring to tonight.
Oh, okay, what's your name?
Eric Lewis.
Nice to meet you, yeah, thanks for being here. Any questions from, yeah, Councilman Flynn?
Just kind of curious, Eric, on your timeline with the, once the building is rehabbed and the new CNC machines and other equipment come in, are you looking at kind of that building up and running six months a year?
That building was actually up and running to some extent, one month before we purchased the building.
Oh, wow.
We have hired and have working full-time, fifty hours a week right now, thirty-four people in that building. Yes.
And these are, were additional, thirty-four additional employees?
That's correct. Thirty-four additional to what we had at plant one and two, right? We had about ninety-five people in those two buildings and now we've added thirty-four more in the new building. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Stucho.
I'm a gentleman as well with CNC machines. So first of all, question, what kind of CNC machines do you have?
Oh, we're pretty picky, Marata ways. We run twin-spindle Marata ways, we have about thirty-five of those. And we have a lot of Morisake. We're getting into a lot of Dusans and Akumas now.
You're way out of my league. Do you run multiple shifts or just one?
And we run two ten-hour shifts, five days a week, so it's a fifty-hour schedule, five days a week.
Okay, thank you. You too.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Questions? Okay. Yeah, Councilman Flynn?
I would just like to say thank you. On behalf of the city and, and your employees, thank you for being able to, you know, expand like this and help out not only your business, but to help out families and to help out the city, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Thank you. Podium is still open? Okay. All set. I will close the public hearing. I'm curious, why, why is the tax saving so small on this project, Sam?
So it has to, so it has to do with, again, the investment amount, which like I said, like the majority of the investment they're making, you know, in terms of equipment in the building purchase price, you can't actually deduct it, right? So it ends up being, you know, for the purposes of the IFE, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And then you also have to, the, you know, residences and, and, you know, the fifty percent reduction you get if it's your principal residence or different types of properties are taxed differently. So with industrial, you are, you know, collecting, you know, more taxes than you would be with different classes of property.
Okay.
So, you know, all that kind of factors together and that's why it's really, it's, it's not that big of a dent in terms of what the city would lose.
But obviously. Ninety thousand dollars, that's correct. Eight thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars, fifteen cents?
For the city-operated cumulative.
Yeah.
Correct.
It seems like other two hundred and fifty thousand dollar Oprahs would save tens of thousands over the lifetime. I mean, I see that the total is thirty-nine thousand.
Yeah, that's for all taxing it.
Right, yeah.
You know, but, but, and that's, and, and let me say this, that's also the other value of this, right? Because it's not just what, you know, the city in this case is foregoing, which is a small amount, but it allows the city to also provide that property owner relief from other taxes, including county and other jurisdictions.
Okay, thanks, any other questions, comments? All set, okay. Already closed the public hearing, so I will entertain a motion.
So, score.
Councilman Wolfram, Councilman Stucho made the motion to approve the IFE and Councilman Flynn supported the motion. Final chance for discussion. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilman Fulfram?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Galagino?
Yes.
Councilperson Bentley?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Morrissey?
Yes.
And Stucho?
Yes.
Six zero approved, actually ordinance twenty-five dash five.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, resolution three six fifty-four.
Yes, ordinance next, thank you. Okay, we will move to letter D, an option ordinance this time, amending section thirty-six dash one forty-three to rezon one twenty-four South Howell Street, the hospice facility. Sam is coming back to us.
Hello. All right, so this is an amendment to our zoning ordinances, so one twenty-four South Howell Street, that is the location of the Hillsdale Hospice Office Building, that's our administrative building there. They did apply to have it rezoned, it's currently zoned RD one. They wanted to rezone it to B one, which is local business. If you read the primary uses that are allowed in the B one zoning district, it does include offices for any of the following occupations, executive, administrative, and professional. So it does meet a primary use in order to be eligible for rezoning to B one. Just a little bit of background, since they go through the planning commission and was recommended to council, but in this particular case, that building has been operated as an office building for, probably going on the better part of twenty years now, before it was used as an office building for hospice. It was a chiropractor's office at one point. For whatever reason, the zoning was never updated in the past, it's always been zoned RD one. And so that relatively recently did create a couple of headaches for them in terms of trying to get an accurate appraisal of the property's value because they have to factor in what, what zoning classification the property has, as well as just to make sure that they had a, have adequate insurance coverage for the building. One of the issues they ran into was that if, you know, there was a fire or some other type of accident, if something happened to that building, they could not reconstruct it as-is in that district because it's legal non-conforming. And it is an office building that wouldn't be allowed to be rebuilt there. So really, this is more just a corrective rezoning, acknowledging what the current use of the property is. They went through the public hearing notification process and planning commission did recommend it to council. So this would be to formally amend our zoning ordinance to declare this property zone B one instead of RD one.
Okay, thanks for the background. Are there any questions or comments from council? Planning commission has already had the public hearing, so if there are no questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Support.
Motion on the floor to approve from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilman Flynn. Any discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor Proton Bellino.
Yes.
Councilperson Beckley.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Stutchal.
Yes.
And Wolfram.
Yes.
That's six zero approved, and that's ordinance twenty-five dash five.
Great, thank you, we will move on to old business, Roman numeral A, letter A, code enforcement update from Camp Hope, and I believe him is not here, Dave, you're taking this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, and we do have other staff members here as well, if there are any questions. DPS Director Blake, the fire gentleman in the back, as well as police officer, if there are questions for them as well. But just to kind of touch on the topic, you know, council voted on October sixth, meet at the October sixth meeting for city staff to move forward with removal of the non-compliant structure. The building was posted, condemned and unsafe for human occupancy on October eighth, with a deadline now for the occupants to vacate of October fifteenth. Posting also specified the city staff will remove the structure between October sixteenth and seventeenth. The letter, a letter signed by Melissa Dashjarden's Hillsdale Community Thrift Letterhead was emailed to the zoning administrator on October fifteenth, indicating that all occupants had been vacated, have vacated the tent. And so, at eight AM, October sixteen, the co-official, Kim Thomas, assisted by Jason Blake, the Department of Public Service Crew, city police officers, and we had a fire officer on there as well, as well as VPU electric workers to decide to remove the tent. Followed, followed kind of a predetermined plan for that, and all went as well as we had hoped. Jason, was there anything you want to add? I know you were on site helping take down the tent.
No, all in all, we had sixteen staff members from the city there on site throughout the three operation were there. We just show up at eight oh one, around there about nine after eleven. Out of the sixteen city staff that was there, nine, or sorry, eleven of us stayed through the day and removed about four point one six pounds of material from the structure to the transportation. For the most part, I thought, I know, I know, of all the sixteen staff that we had there, they're professional through the proliferation of it.
Thank you very much, anything from council? Councilman Beckley?
I saw a couple of clips on the news, it seemed to be fairly uneventful, was, were there, was that correct, or was there protesters or any ugliness?
There was a little bit there, the comments ranged from your vulgar profanity to, I'll just say it, you know, I wish we were dead, to I wish we should be shot, to they wish they were on top of the tractors, sniping us off, I mean, that was pretty much studied through the day.
Really?
Absolutely.
Sorry you had to deal with that, Jason, appreciate your seriousness, thank you.
Thanks for those of our staff.
Yeah, thank them all, of course, appreciate that. Any other questions or comments from council? No incident as far as law enforcement was concerned?
No, the police presence there, I thought was quite very well done. Whenever something was said, the cops would kind of step in and just literally would walk away. But of course, it was preparation through the day.
Okay. Should we wait till Kim returns to get an update on what's the ongoing situation? Or do you feel ready to speak on that?
I can speak on to some degree, we can have Kim here at one of their next meetings to discuss it further. But, you know, we are working through the process with Hope Harbor, the Hope Harbor Plan. And, you know, that will proceed as we have the information to, for the staff to review it and to move it forward through the Planning Commission. There is some discussion on the material we've received to date, whether it's satisfactory or enough. When Kim gets back later this week, we'll have that discussion, we'll get in touch with the folks from Hope Harbor.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, I put a Hillsdale Daily News asked for a statement, and I just put out there that this enforcement action has no legal connection necessarily to the application for the Planning Commission, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that out there, some people thought these were connected as a matter of law or policy, and that is not the case. Okay, anything else from council or staff? All set, okay. We did not add anything to old business, new business, letter A, liquor control commission for Saint Joe Pizza. Kim is not here again, Sam, you're taking over, thank you.
Yeah, so Saint Joe's Pizza, they're looking to participate in the Downtown Chili Cook-Off competition, that is, come in Saturday in downtown Hillsdale. As they did with a previous event that Hillsdale Renaissance had helped organize, they are looking to set up a special temporary service area where they would be able to sell alcohol, to have something closer, like as part of the actual event versus having folks have to go all the way down to their business at Ninety-two Broad Street. In order to do that, you have to get temporary authorization from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission to set up that temporary service area, that is not your normal place of doing business for which you have that liquor license. The other thing that you need is if you're proposing to do that in a public right-of-way, you also have to have permission from the local unit of government. What they are proposing is to, in what we have TCO for, is to allow them to actually block off the four parking spaces on North Powell. There would be barricades, you know, water-filled barricades, you know, around that as a kind of safety measure. And the idea is they would do that there versus having to shut the entire street down. Part of the goal of this event, having a chili cook-off, is getting people to be able to visit businesses. It is Parents Weekend, where you get a lot of folks coming from the college. And not having to shut that street down and instead let them just utilize a portion of the right-of-way seems like, you know, my opinion, a better way to do it. That is something that, you know, was discussed with Mr. Blake, your DPS Director, as well as Chief Heffner. So, the request from council is twofold, it's one, to give them permission to utilize that public right-of-way for this purpose, and then as well as endorse the supplemental of their temporary authorization to the Liquor Control Commission.
Okay, great, thank you, the social district doesn't cover this type of event because they're serving at a different location?
So, the thing about this event that is different is a lot of the activities for the Downtown Chili Cook-Off event, Hillsdale Renaissance has worked with the county to put some of that stuff on county courthouse property. The county does not allow alcohol to be served on its property, and that county courthouse property itself is not part of the social district comments area. So, that area has to be kept alcohol-free, which means that the only other public right-of-way, you know, would either be shutting down the street, you know, taking up, in this case, you know, parking spaces. The sidewalks are a part of the comments area for the social district, but again, you can't actually, this is something they can't do on county property because of their rules.
Okay, so that will be posted, are the social district signs still up?
There are a couple that need to be, a lot that need to be replaced, there are a few permanent ones over the, over the last year or two, we have been looking at initially when we started, there were no, no funds originally allocated for signage. So, it's as, you know, people have been buying the social district stickers, the goal is to phase in that. So, we've also, you know, looked at doing some, you know, paint applications to the sidewalk, but there are some initial temporary signs that do need to be replaced when they get taken down. We do have several permanent ones installed by some of the foundries, there's one on North Powell Street, there's one going down Bacon. So, there are a few areas that do have those permanent signage, permanent signage installed, and those are little metal signs that are abandoned or fixed to the poles in that area.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council? All set? Okay, thank you very much, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Wolfram, so this is for the temporary authorization and the right-of-way permit. Any discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilperson Beckley.
Yes.
Flynn.
Yes.
Morrissey.
Yes.
Stutchal.
Yes.
And Wolfram.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bellino.
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay, new business, letter B, we moved on the PDP of Hillsdale County sponsorship. So, I suppose this would be, Dave, is that right, is that your name on that?
Yes.
Okay, so what is this going for? What does our membership look like in this?
So, we have been a member of the Hillsdale County Economic Development Partnership since its inception almost fifteen years ago. It's typically, the fee has been paid from the VPU, so it was paid by the Electric Water and Sewer Department, and the city as part of, owner of the VPU is part of that entity. So, this is an entity that's county-wide, other municipal members are Jonesville, Reading, Litchfield, County National Bank is a corporate member, Paragon Metals, Hillsdale Terminal, the Market House, the hospital. So, we have a number of members within the Hillsdale community, which partake and help promote economic development in the community. Some of the, are in the county and community, and given Hillsdale is the biggest community of the county, we do get a lot of services from them. As you remember, Sue and Sally were here at the last meeting, we set the public hearing for Cobra Moto IFT. And they do that type of work throughout the city with our businesses. Particularly with the industrial part, but also with some of the smaller businesses. They assist our little smaller, our businesses with getting grants, we're working on a housing study. They work with MEDC for state grants, they do a lot of job training with our local businesses, a lot of technical training, whether it's with the robots, welding, things that you just can't send someone off to. And they actually get monies from MEDC to actually do training at specific businesses for the various equipment. They help coordinate state projects, so they're, work with Michigan Works, so with a project, the state gets a project that comes forward, they contact the cities that might have useful space in our industrial parks or, and ask us if it's something we want to submit. So, like, we have numerous acres out in our industrial park, so they'll come to us and say, the state will give them a confidential name for a project, and they'll say, these are the specifications, do you, and this is kind of generally what the business is, do you want to submit a location? And typically, myself, Sam, Kim, and the staff get together and put that information together and move forward. So, that being said, we do get a lot of value out of this, and have, just given the fact that, you know, we're probably the largest, we're the largest driving force for economic development in county. So, again, we're very pleased, I'm on the board, Sam is on the board, previous to Sam, Kelly LaPresto was on the board. So, we do have very good representation. Consumers Energy is a member, Michigan Gas is a member. Just, it's been a very positive organization for the county, in my opinion.
Okay, great, thank you, so our citizens get these services then for free based on the VPU sponsorship of it?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, any questions or comments from council? Or anything else from other staff? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
I just think that this is a, another voice out there in the business ether, promoting Hillsdale, Hillsdale County. And, you know, the more voices that we have out there promoting us, inviting people to, you know, be a part of our county, instead of Branch Hill, or Blenway, or Jackson County, or Eamon County, I think is a positive, and if we can, has it always been fifteen thousand? I mean, is this more than last year, or?
No, it's always actually been fifteen thousand, it hasn't changed.
Okay, so I think, I think this is a positive, I mean, even if we can just, if we've got somebody that's got our name in the discussion, we, we're not obviously going to get everything that's out there, but if they don't know about us, they're never going to choose us. So, if this is a way for the EVP to get our voice out there, then it just has a great benefit. The only thing I would say, it'd be nice if their offices were in Hillsdale instead of Litchfield. So, it'd be nice if they were here.
Thank you, Councilman Flynn, any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you, I will entertain a motion.
So move.
Or?
To approve?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Flynn to approve, seconded by Councilman Stutchal. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we'll move on to Roman numeral ten, Miss Laney's reports, we don't have any proclamations, we have two appointments, one to the Planning Commission for Eric Coikendall, he could not make it unfortunately, and one for the Library Board, Elisa April, and I believe she is here, if the council would like to hear from her. If you want to come up. Hi.
Hi.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for having me, my name is Elisa April, I am grateful to you all for considering me for the Library Board. I've been involved with my local community libraries, I'm from a very young age, my family was always involved in our local library. In high school, that turned into me actually joining my student advisory committee at my local library. That turned into working at my college library for all four years, and I actually joined their student advisory committee as well, and then served on it for three years, so I'm very involved with a number of different libraries, then getting involved turned in Hillsdale community. I just love our local library, and I'm excited to support it in any way I can as a library board member.
Great, thank you, any questions or comments from council? Okay, thanks for being here, yeah, sorry, Eric couldn't be here, I don't know if anyone has any, yes, Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, I've known Mr. Coikendall for a long time, exactly, he's one of my students at the college named twenty years ago or so. And a very smart guy, I'm on the, as you know, I'm your representative on the Planning Commission, so I'd be very happy to see him join the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Councilman Morrissey. Okay. Is there anything else, we can approve them separately or together?
Move to approve both.
Or?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Beckley, seconded by Councilman Stutchal to approve Eric Coikendall for Planning Commission and Elisa April for Library Board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we will move on to Roman numeral eleven, general public comment. You have three minutes to speak on anything you would like, the podium is open.
Melissa Dashjarden, word three, I just wanted to clarify some comments. Mr. Bellino, you made the comment that I've had two years to become into compliance, but this council never brought a problem until last fall. You wanted me to tear down the tent and put them all on the street at the end of January, which is basically our, like, January and February, our two coldest months of the year. I pleaded till spring, I have never withheld any information, I have always been transparent with the city what went on at Camp Hope. We waited and waited for a full-time shelter that never came. It was only supposed to be temporary, but now, since there's still not a full-time shelter, we're going to move forward with sober transitional housing. And as far as the comment that was just made by Jason, we have three people who were standing around the property that were filming, I have all of my cameras on my property, and the police officers had all of their cameras on. I have all of my cameras on my property, and the police officers had all of their cameras on. So when the comment was made by Mr., uh, Mackey here, that it was pretty uneventful, but then you had to sneak in that question just to have him say that, why wouldn't Ken Thomas disclose that? It's not, it's very apparent what's going on here. This was a very personal attack, because you went and did your interview over at Share the Warmth after you were made aware that Share the Warmth doesn't have a permit either. So you want to stand up here and you want to say that you're abiding by the rules because you have to, and the zoning and everything else. And yet you targeted me, but you didn't go after her. Now, God forbid, I don't want anything to happen to Share the Warmth. What just happened in our community and what got spread across this nation, Michigan Coalition is going to use it as an example. What you did to me and those people on that property, you can take our tent, but you will never take the hope. And you lit a fire in me, huh, I think one day I think I'm going to run in politics, just so something like this does not happen again. You're not fooling nobody. Nobody. Everybody saw what you did, and now they all know. I put a FOIA in just so, an official FOIA, just to see their permit over at Share the Warmth. You got mad because I had two years to come into compliance. They've been operational almost eight years. So you look the one way on one, but you targeted us. Don't think for one second the pe- the people in the public have spoken. If you're going to stand up for your rules and regulations, then you gotta do it for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley Heaver, three ninety, West Carrollton. You can't grow a city from the top. You build a city for the most vulnerable to receive the services too. On October third, the packet was posted online, and three choices were presented for the discussion on Camp Hope. Yet on Monday, October sixth, the third choice was no longer there. But only the two choices were given. Proof of the edit was the word "or." At the end of option two, Kim admitted to making the change to the options, stating she forgot to remove "or." Why wasn't the change made, known to be, but marked clearly in the agenda, edited? And who decided that there wasn't being an off- another offer as an option? Needing to add pictures to the destruction to the packet to supply proof while bragging how hard the city employees had to work is sad. I'm glad you recognize your employees, and you should consider doing so with all their tasks. But I think it's just proof how well the tent was put together. It was well constructed, constructed, meant to stand, and no insulation was wet. Not one rat or evidence of rats was found. Did you hear me, Apple Run? There wasn't rats. And there was no drugs or needles found despite the rumors and the lies that have been spread. You should be ashamed of yourselves for believing all the unfounded complaints. What I don't see up here is a person that can't find a place to sleep, find food, or receive help with their medications. What I do see up here in the council is not only will you give extensions and abatements to businesses and other city projects, but you'll allow another shelter operate with all proper permits. On October fifteenth, I asked Kim Thomas for the permits submitted by Share the Warmth for building the showers and allowing people to sleep in the Sozo Church. She nervously explained to me, there wasn't one. And they made special arrangements. And you want us to believe your decision about Camp Hope wasn't personal? I believe this decision became personal for some of you. And there's a truth I learned as a child. Everyone puts their pants on the same way, and your shit still sticks.
Howard Spats Hillsdale, Apple Run resident. There's no truth in what was just said about firsthand experiences. I've had three firsthand experiences. I'm a child of the sixties. Two of those people were closed, stoned, including the guy that tried to get in my apartment. None of this happened before that camp arrived. I thank you guys for taking that tent down, it was safe. Now they've moved into that second building without their permits, without their zoning, whatever you want to need to have that so you can have residential. How long is it going to be this time? They're gonna, I saw about fifteen minutes of the demolition, standing in our, in our parking lot watching it. I heard the verbal taunts, I heard the profanities. I also heard the kind of, save my lumber, I'm going to start a bonfire and smoke Apple Run out. Unfortunately for them, they didn't do it. So unfortunately, the wind normally comes from the west to the east, so they're going to smoke themselves out. As long as they continue to be able to put people in this house, and it's going to take months and months and months to get all these permits, the same stuff's going to keep happening. So far, no one's been hurt. There was a close call a week or so ago with a, a technical car jacking in the parking lot. I don't want to make anybody else more targets than we already are. The camp, you want to put it somewhere, fine. Don't put it where it's going to be so handy for somebody to come up there because it's just, you know, twenty feet away, they can walk through the little tree line and get in there. I know firsthand what's going on there. Two of the three people were clearly stoned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Hendy, one eighty-one, Rees Street. I don't think the city took any pleasure in shutting Camp Hope down, but I do believe that it was the right thing to do. Uh, my neighbor, um, code enforcement was forced on her for a beautiful sidewalk and stairs going down to the road. Um, so I, I, I think that, um, you can't force it on one if you're not going to force it on all. I also, uh, wanted to talk a little bit about Tifa and these opers. Mr. Palladino wrote a great story, I don't know, it's been about a month and a half ago, great story on Tifa. But he left out a lot of variables that I'm going to explain, which Mr. Stuccio is kind of, uh, passionate about, I'll say. Tifa not only collects fifty-three percent of the taxes in the business district, it gets grants, brownfield redevelopment grants, which is all public money, all kinds of other grants. Not only that, they get tax payments. We just had a couple here. Last one was six hundred thousand dollars to, uh, Andrew Gelsner. So, uh, Tifa is, you know, more than double dipping the taxpayers outside this district. Plus, we have residential homes in the district that have never gotten, they, they've never gotten nothing. Tifa's robbing these residential homes, then what do they get? Are they going to get a five thousand dollar tax assessment, Mr. Mackey? When you redo their roads? When Tifa's grabbing fifty-three percent of their property taxes? I mean, it goes from Mary to West, all the way down to Monroe, over, up. I mean, I believe that if you're going to redo the roads, Tifa shouldn't be exempt from the five thousand dollar exemption. I mean, that's just how I feel. If, you can't impose that on the homeowners because they're in the Tifa district and not the businesses downtown. Uh, I, I just find it, so I, I, I know some of these businesses right downtown here have never gotten a dime for Tifa. Now let's do a study and see who these people are that keep getting the money. I can do it, Mr. Mackey can do it, Josh can do it.
Thank you.
James L. Thomas, twenty-two hundred Bar Street. Uh, first off, I want to point out that I covered one point three miles, thirty to twenty minutes, four point three three miles an hour getting here. So, I probably should have been a little easier on myself when I was a little winded at the podium. Uh, secondly, look, I'm not, uh, I'm not the official official on this. But what I understand from Share the Warmth and the reason they're able to continue their mission is because it's run through Sozo Church and is an arm of Sozo Church. So that that Sharing the Warmth is a, uh, extension of their religious nonprofit mission. Uh, so I believe that is the, uh, uh, mechanism to which they are allowed to do what they do. I do want to say that, uh, Missy made an excellent point. When you zone, you got to zone across the board, you can't play favorites, it's got to be across the board. Hypothetically, the tent should have been down in two weeks. Uh, I agree with, uh, Shelley. My dad always used to say opinions are like assholes, everybody's got one, and everybody thinks everybody else stinks. So, two great points, uh, on that, and, uh, I did want to point out, since it's my free time to talk about whatever, that the coverage from the local media around Camp Hope, especially from the Collegiate, was horrendous. It was one-sided, they never got two sides, and a lot of the facts they put out there didn't end up checking out throughout the timeline. Normally, when I go to look for news, I go to Adam's Times, I go to the Hills Daily, and I go to Penny Swan, and I go to Joseph Hendy, and then I kind of mix that all together to try to figure out what's going on. Sprinkle a little Jeff King comment, and I think I've got a good picture on what's going on around here. I want to say that, uh, I think I did the math right, and I may be wrong about, uh, the number of people within the county. But I estimate it at forty-eight thousand people within the county. If each of us gave twenty dollars, that would make nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars to Share the Warmth on December second. So I assume that, you know, some of us are children, th- this one included. So maybe if the adults in the room could, uh, maybe contribute fifty dollars apiece, uh, we're actually above that nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar mark, and we're really getting somewhere. Uh, there is a need, there are people who are less fortunate, and it is up to us, and I'm looking at all of us here that I'm looking at, to take care of the people who are less fortunate. We just got to make sure that we follow zonings and codes and respect neighbors and follow processes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Thank you all. I will close the podium. I will move on to City Manager's Board.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, just a couple things I want to address, and I actually have a email here from the, Courtney Dorsonan Officer, Kim Thomas, and Cessar, um, as she was responding to Mr. Walworth's question about this particular topic. Um, I'm going to read that, but I would just like to say that, um, some of the things you heard here, the city staff will not, uh, agree with all the comments that were made. That everything was peaceful, there were no signs of, um, rodents, um, some of those comments, city staff has told me that weren't, uh, the complete opposite, and, and I would stand by the city staff. That being said, we do know where the tenants of the tent have moved into, because we've been told, we've been told by Missy. We've been, it's, it's in the newspaper, um, they're in the adjacent building there, that is what we're told. That is another issue, and we do understand, uh, I don't know if that gentleman's still here, but we do still under- understand that that's not kosher either. So we'll be discussing that matter, but this is, uh, um, Kim Thomas's email to Larry Walworth. Soza Church does not house people. The primary use of the building is still as a church. The warming center is operated by Share the Warmth of Hillsdale County under an agreement at the Soza Church building, and provides emergency shelter, food, and clothing between November first to April first. Individuals served are not permitted, uh, to stay past nine AM or arrive before six PM. They are not provided with twenty-four hour accommodations. They can't receive mail or register to vote at the church or anything else which would imply the church is their primary resident. This is an ancillary use of the church, consistent with the overall mission and common practices at many churches, even if not advertised. This is not a change in the primary use of the building, so no special permits were required. There were permits told with the county to make alterations to the building by Soza Church or Sozo, which improved the accommodations available to the shelter users. But those alterations were not specifically required to allow the operation of an emergency shelter. Share the Warmth has discussed purchasing and renovating a building of their own for year-round permanent shelter. This would require permits and zoning approval if that is the primary use of the building, as I have discussed with their director. My understanding is that their plan, if they acquire their own building, is to still only, is still only to provide overnight emerg- and emergency shelter. Hope Harbor, by comparison, is prom- proposing to provide transitional housing in a boarding house, dormitory-style accommodations, where people can establish non-transient residence while presumably trying to find more permanent individual, individually occupied housing. This will allow them to have an address where they can receive mail, register to vote, and not require, and not be required to carry all of their worldly belongings with them every day. Uh, that was the end of the email, um, from Ms. Thomas, but I think what she points out here is fairly clear, that they're saying that, um, Hope Harbor or Camp Hope was being treated differently. But they're not being treated differently for, because of the saying, because they're clearly different based on their purpose and where they're housed. So, um, you know, I don't have any more than this at this particular time, but given the comments made, I felt it was appropriate to reiterate, um, what was sent to Mr. Walworth, because he did have that, uh, send that question to Ms. Thomas, and, uh, you know, uh, it's something that she could, uh, address further in a future meeting. And that, that's all I have for my.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Bentley?
Uh, this, I guess, is both a council comment and a question for the City Manager. Talking to Penny Myers, she, when she came up with this idea, I believe in twenty eighteen, the first thing she did, if I understand correctly, was come and talk to Mr. Beaker and Kim and yourself. Can you speak to the origin?
I can't, I don't recall. I was there at the time, but I do know, I, we had talked, and I know I was involved in some of the meetings, but I do know she talked to, uh, Mr. Beaker and, uh, Ms. Thomas, uh, upfront.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? Councilman Morrissey, do you know if we have a date for the Planning Commission hearing on Hope Harbor?
I've received anything.
I have already, yeah, okay. Uh, okay, so we are into General Counsel comment then. Is there anything else? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
Just a quick question for the attorney. Uh, we had talked at our last meeting, uh, a little bit about the position of Mayor Protem with the upcoming election, and you mentioned that you were going to kind of look into that a little further and, and, and see, so that we kind of know moving forward after that election, if Mr. Palladino will remain Mayor Protem until the next general election? Or if we, did you find anything out?
I hate to say this, Councilman Flynn, but I forgot all about it, so you just mentioned it. But, but I'll take a look at it here this weekend, and I can just email you, uh, opinions on what, what members of the council still think about that.
Thank you.
Anything else from council? All set. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Word.
Motion on the floor, Councilman Flynn, to adjourn, seconded by Councilman Stuccio. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here.